Five. Approve the minutes here, guys.
Make a motion to approve the minutes for 25th, 2021, as written.
Second.
Do you want to get out the second?
No, I'm getting out the second. Barry wasn't.
I'll second.
All favor.
Aye.
All right, then there was another one here that Jim and Bill were not here, so this is November 22nd.
I hear.
Three of you.
Yeah, we were all here.
Then I'll make a motion. It's up to minutes for November 22nd, as written.
Second. All favor.
Aye.
So Muddy Brooks, they're going to continue that hearing. What's the next date? They want to continue to January 24th. Okay, so you want to make a motion?
I'm making a motion to continue the public hearing for Muddy Brooks' dates to January 24th. Seven twenty-two, seven thirty.
Second. All favor. Aye. Same thing for this one here.
For five more, she finally gave us a date of March 20th. She wanted to. She wanted to have the.
That's what she wants to come back in?
Yeah. Damon, can I speak to that?
Yeah.
I talked to both the engineer and the office manager today, and I don't know. It seems, A, that this has been going on forever, this special permit process. And B, why do they need so much time? And, you know, he. The engineer just said that he has a client that keeps changing his mind. And that they can't, you know, they think they got it now, but now they have to redo the plans, wait for Graves, and go back and forth again. I told him, you know, the 28th has to be. We got to get near the end of this, regardless of what direction it goes in. But at least I got his attention.
Okay, that sounds good. Thank you.
Make a motion to continue hearing for five more, by March 28th, 2022.
It seemed like, Jack, every time I come in, there was a little confusing. I mean, the plans he came in with multiple times were, and seemed to have all his ducks in a row anyway, so hopefully he will by March.
Yeah, you know, I only, I came in in the middle of this, but I know he had this strange underground pipe that was going in the reverse direction. And Damon, he also wants to get ahold of you or in your role as conservation chair, or maybe the new conservation agent, to talk about, so I guess some historic decision that was made there that he could look at. Do you remember that?
I don't know if there was anything drastic that went on over there, other than the delineation of a wetland.
Yeah, I guess that's probably.
You know, I mean, that's basically all it was. There was a retention pond that Mike Salvador had done years back, but nothing ever got finished because he sold the property. So I think they just need to do their due diligence and do their, that's what they're there for. I mean, we don't want, we don't make, we can't do anything for him. We're not engineers or botanists.
Understood.
All right, thank you. All right, second to that. All favor. You want to hold off on this decision and go get these 81Ps out of the way, then we'll talk about that decision for Cape Bro.
Sure, I'm here.
Okay, with that? An 81P by Andrew Survey? They here? I don't think he's here.
He was just on TV.
Oh, was he?
Byron Andrews.
Byron? Take a quick look at this, guys. This may really, it's all over here. We're going to just open one up here.
Damon, which one are you going for?
Thornton Street. I think basically this was just a, a family, a block line. A family piece of property that they are just, and some block lines, so they do. Make a total block, not just let me down the road. They had a big lot that they had down. Hey, Chad?
Yes?
Maybe just take a walk up here for me, just explain to these guys. This here, this one, why, wasn't here. This was all, all of your dad, right? Now, how does it look like here? So this is the bottom, this is the bottom.
This will be much still part of that lot.
Jeff? So this, this one, you have this line.
Yes, correct.
They just, they just took this piece out of the family land.
Yeah.
And it's the best we can know this house on empty, and it's all family, this is everything. Any questions about Brooks, we here? I'll make a motion to approve the 81Ps on five fifteen.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
All right, and now. About that, I should get that. Here, please, here. Something very. That's it. You have the Miler?
Whatever we say.
You have a pen from Mylar? Mylar?
There should have been.
Is Byron, is Byron on there?
I think he's muted, Damon.
Hello?
He's got a, on you, he's out to join the meeting. Have a meeting to accept.
Here he is. Hey. All right. No Mylar here for this?
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought that the Mylar had been brought in.
No.
We do not have it, no?
Do you, do you have copies of the plan?
Yes.
I have copies of the plan, but I do not have the Mylar. That's what you need to record.
Right, can we vote on the plan and we'll bring the Mylar in tomorrow and, you know, get it signed whenever it's convenient for you?
Yeah, well, everything's going to be voted on, but we just got to need that, that's, you know, you'll need that to do your thing.
Yeah, absolutely.
Want to see which page it is?
If there's only one there.
Yeah.
I thought there were two.
Hold on one second.
I'll take the part of the, as long as it's all signed.
You got one here, you got one here. You got one? Barry, your second. Well, that one there has names on it, so we just did what we did there. Well, this is the wrong one. One? No, this is Cape Bro. They don't want to do that.
Oh, no, that's the. That's the decision.
All right, he's there again. These two, both that we sign, maybe. And that's all for. That's because we got time. All right, so you'll bring that in tomorrow?
Yes, I will.
I mean, we'll have to just try to get by here, and everybody will have, all the members will try to get by here and sign, or get signed, so that it's got the right amount of signatures on it, and you can come by.
Yeah, I appreciate that, and I apologize for the inconvenience.
I know, it's not inconvenience, that's just convenience. You're at it.
You just need the first three members that come in and sign. Yeah.
All right. Gil? How to deal with that? Gil, he'll drop that off, we'll get that signed. And then you guys can work it out, maybe grab it soon again. All right?
All right, thanks.
Thank you. All right. Next 81P is Dustin Hershaw, Blackstone Street, hold on, hold on. So the way, this is you. This is you here. What are you doing here now? This is a conform block. It's, you always say, this is a conform block, this is a five. This is that one grave that committed, just before many. Their family just got a bunch of farm animals up back, a bunch of farm there. It's, you keep this, so nobody does it, they are, we should speak better. Any questions of anybody about Blackstone Street?
I'll sign then.
I'll make a motion to approve the 81Ps.
Give me second to that. Barry made the motion, Gil.
Do you think?
Yes. All favor. All right, President, Jimmy? Damon, Barry, I mean Damon, uh.
Same here.
You got the scale here?
Were there stairs for two eighty and two forty?
Yes. This is, this, I'll, I'll put everything back together and put it here, sign. That's what they didn't have. They've been going back and forth with that. That plan, that's what we're treating. I'm going to give you. You have an eight to nine? I'll put. Then you're not signing on, so you can. You have a thought, I mean. You got more here, hungry? Well, you got three. You want to pay me more? Out of fire?
Is that an excellent?
You want to keep one of your fires?
I need that four.
Need four, I think.
I need four minutes.
Four, sign? I'm going to give you, I'm going to, I'm going to leave these out of it. Because those are not. You don't want that. But I mean, you don't want to have, because then you, then you're just giving confused.
Right, I just need the full sign.
Full sign.
And he does the Mylar.
Yeah.
Second, Ken. Yep, any time.
That's all assigned. I made a phone, so we can make a phone call.
And make sure the form goes without sign.
Yeah. Give me, I can ask. Yeah, give me the one that's assigned. Mylar, you go with him.
Yes.
You're good to go. Let me give you the other side. Give me the side there. All right, she got, she got everything she needs. Nope. All good. Just you get a sign on these two, and then we're good. You're good to go. Thank you. All right, thank you. Do you want to give them probably? They want.
No, I think the two.
I just got to.
I've got a couple of small items to.
Okay, yeah, let's, let's get, let's get this decision here.
Yeah, I think I need to take like ten minutes.
Okay, Jack?
Yeah, this is the decision for the site plan review on 35 Cape. You know, I'm not exactly sure why the bill separated the two, but after talking to town council, she said, because, well, A, we're in litigation about the special permit, but she said, just, you know, it's the exact same conditions. It's a different statute, exact same conditions that stand, that you voted on, on the special permit. So you need to make a decision. There it is. It's been approved by town council.
So we'll move forward, listen to this.
I think everyone should.
Have you, has the town, town council has read the decision?
Yes.
She's comfortable with everything?
She seemed to be. I talked to her before I wrote it to make sure what she wanted in it, and as she said, she wanted the exact same conditions, exact same language, other than the statute. And she, I sent her it, and she didn't comment back, so I assume everything's fine.
Yeah, can you help with her not, hold on, commenting back on it?
No, we didn't.
Pardon? I, I didn't, I can't hear you, Jim.
Are you comfortable that she did not comment back on it?
Yes, because it's the exact same thing, James. It was a different decision or something like that, I would have pursued it, but it's, it's the exact same thing.
All right, thanks, Jack.
Thanks, Jack.
Are there any questions about anything for on the decision of 35 Cape?
Eric, 30. I almost said 35 Cape, I don't want that. Which one? Rebate Street. Jack, you mentioned a different statute reference here. Could you?
I want to come up, Eric, so you can hear your microphone. Be easy.
Jeff, you mentioned a different statute being referenced for the, the site plan review. Can you just give a little bit more detail about that?
Sure. What the, when the planning board advertised and heard, and opened the hearings, they were doing two simultaneous permits. One was a special permit, because it exceeded 10,000 square feet. And the other one was site plan review, which is for any building, really, that, that comes, a commercial building that comes before the board. There are two different statutes within the bylaw, and their site plan review, you only need three vote, positive votes, as opposed to four for a special permit. There's different criteria and a little more discretion, maybe, or less discretion, I would say, in site plan review than the special permit.
Okay, and that, and that, those statutes are documented in the decision?
Yes.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Any else? I think so. Anybody else on it with 35 Cape Row? This is not the same piece that. Any other motions? I'll make a motion to accept a decision, approve the decision as written by Jack, 35 Cape Row.
Second.
All favor.
Aye.
You sign that?
I'm signing, yeah. Hey, Gail, that, once it's signed, Gail, I'll have to go to the clerk.
Yes, I know. Yeah, okay, Jeff.
And.
I made a motion.
I second.
Okay, thank you, Dave. The call is just needed.
Okay.
You want the date, Stan, or you just ready?
You did it? No, you did it.
I'm sorry, it was real good.
I'll put a date on it. Uh, there was a date on that, Jim?
Just say it at the top of your signatures. Should be.
All right. All right. Post meetings dates to the next six months?
Yes, I posted them all.
Okay, you got them all done?
Yes.
February, what's February?
Uh, that would be the 21st.
That's President's Day.
Oh, I'm sorry, 14th and 28th.
Yeah, 28th I can't do, because it has the same situation as the last one we're having. Mandatory class, I have to take.
All right, also make sure, make sure of the date.
So we only got one meeting in February?
It'll be the 14th.
14th or the 28th, and the 28th?
Yeah, we can do the 28th.
Yeah, yeah.
I just have family, it's still not.
We'll do both, and if some reason we can't get a quorum, at least we had a full, we got the 14th to get some of the board stuff.
Yeah. Do you want the dates of the other ones?
If you can tell them to everybody?
Okay.
That would be good. At least everybody's got a man, they can print them, they want.
Damon, the only problem with the 28th would be that you'd only have three members, so you can't hear any special permits, that's all. But we'll work that.
Got some, if we got some stuff going on, then we can, you know, 81Ps or something.
Right.
Get some, have some housekeeping done. We'll keep it on there. If something happens and there's nothing going on, we won't even have the meeting.
I like that.
And hopefully Bill will be back by.
Yeah, right, yeah, hopefully.
Wouldn't that be nice?
Oh, it would be. Need to do an appointment to CMRPC?
Jack?
I got three, three a month now.
Jack?
What?
CMRPC is looking for you.
Well, I'll tell you right now, it's, I, I'll give it a tiny bit of time, but not a lot.
All right.
If that's okay with you, it's okay with me.
All right.
How about blessing, Jack?
I, we appreciate everything you do.
Well, you need to vote on that, too.
Oh, yeah. I'll make a motion to, to Jack for the CMRPC.
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Jack.
So, Gail?
Yes.
You want to put some stuff that you have on?
Well, I just have, I forgot it, um, I have two applications for a home business that John told them that they have to come to the planning board.
Okay.
Okay, so the first one is 200 Providence Street, out of, you want them attached? And another one is 14 Madison Square.
200 Providence?
Yep.
We got. That's going to be right now.
Uh, where are you? 200 Providence. Resting, DHL. Okay, will that be good? Massage therapist? That's all, it's hip hop stuff?
Yeah.
Probably one person at a time. I thought that would be a lot, but. Coming in. Yeah, I mean, I don't know why, but, you know what, John's asking for it, and that is what we're doing. At least we got a few eyes on that.
Is there, is there anything in the, in the schedule, whatever is it? Before we go too far?
In residential, Jack?
Yeah.
Massage therapist, internal hall. Already in existence, looking for special permit for a home business. I am a massage therapist, esthetician, and polarity therapist.
I'll have to look this up. I, I don't know. Hold on. Talk about the other one while I look this up.
Yeah. Thank you.
I gotta find your section where these home uses are allowed.
We're looking to.
What is it?
We're, we're looking, John's looking too, real quick, to see if he can find.
You guys know it better than I do. Oh, I got it. Okay. Professional dentistry, law, architecture, accounting, engineering, real estate, insurance, metals, woodworking, art photo, domestic works, dressmaking, music, drama, art and crafts, academic pursuits. There are the uses.
It just didn't look for uses.
Therapy uses?
I don't see it in here. Now.
I think that's why.
You said there are other uses.
I mean, I think you could make an argument that it could fall under one of these things.
I think the other one is dog grooming.
Oh, yai, yai, yai. Dog grooming? Dog grooming? Dog, dog groom. You gotta be very careful with dog grooming. Very careful, and the Board of Health has to, um, have a role in this because of the amount of grooming and the type of grooming that they're going to do. Can I, can I do a little more research on this?
Yeah, it's wonderful, just, just so you know.
Get these last week and I didn't understand exactly. This is the first time I've had this in front of you guys, so I can figure it out, but I can't do it right now.
That's fine, and, uh, just, just so you know, the dog grooming, she's looking to do one to four dogs per day.
Okay.
In case that, that, in case that changes the criteria.
Yeah, uh, Gale, we're gonna have to talk to Missy about that. And I'll, I'll call Gale tomorrow, we'll figure it out.
Yeah, so the therapy, uh, the, the massage therapist, and then the other one's the dog grooming, they're both in residential.
Right. And, and if they, if they can move forward, we can't have it on the twenty-eighth Gale, so we probably have to go with the first meeting in March, right? Yeah. No?
On fourteenth, if you approve, if you
Yeah, if you find out that anything is good, they will put them, put them on the agenda for the fourteen.
Okay.
For the both of us.
Okay, but not, not for the public hearing. Just, just to put on the agenda.
You wanna put them up for the public hearing?
No.
Put them on unless, um, I find a problem and then I'll let Damon know.
Okay, so you can put them on for the fourteen.
Okay, so you have
You got enough time?
You have to do the whole.
So we're gonna
To set the public hearing.
We're gonna set. And, and, and unless Jack finds something different, if it's not, it doesn't, it's not allowed, then we will change it. But as of right now, we'll set a public hearing for what's the, uh?
Okay, for, um, February fourteenth.
Yeah, but what's, what's, what's the addresses?
Almost two hundred Providence.
Two hundred Providence and fourteen Massasoit.
Okay, so we're gonna make a motion to set up a public hearing for two hundred Providence Street uh, for massage therapy. February fourteenth, seven o'clock. I'm making a motion, motion for two hundred Providence Street, massage therapy inside my line.
Second.
All fail.
Aye.
Do you wanna put a stipulation in?
Uh, and that's contingent to Jack. Uh, if he finds something that's tells us that it's not allowed. Yeah, then, then we can't do it, since it's not, if you can't do it, then we can't do it.
Right, and I'll talk to you Damon and then you can make the final decision.
Oh, this, yeah, as long as
Intenuation, I'm, I'm contingent on
On Jack's approval, the use, yeah, on the use approval. Um,
Okay.
And then
What was the other address?
Fourteen Massasoit.
Fourteen Massasoit. So I make a motion to have hearing for fourteen Massasoit for dog grooming.
Okay, so the first one was the two hundred Providence.
Correct.
I didn't know if you were doing them together or something.
No.
Okay, okay, so, um, the area, okay?
Fourteen Massasoit for dog grooming business. At seven o'clock.
Second.
Basically.
Okay, James.
All fail.
Contingent on approval.
That, that was also a contingent, contingent on, uh, the use and approval.
Mm-hmm.
And if that, you can give them, you know, once we talk to Jack tomorrow, get, then you can get the, uh,
Yep.
Get in the paper and everything, if you have, if you have enough time to get in the paper for the fourteenth, right?
Oh, yeah.
Plenty of time.
Yeah, oh, yep.
Alright, um, anything else?
No, that's, I'm all set.
You have a good, you have a good, Jack?
We have another meeting this month.
The next meeting is on?
The twenty-fourth.
The twenty-fourth.
So you're all set with that?
Yep, yep, thanks, Sharon.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, alright, have a good night, bye, Jack, thank you very much. Yeah, I'll talk to you tomorrow.
Thanks, Jack.
Alright.